Who's the meanest council member?
Oh, the meanest council member? I'm gonna be charitable to my, my colleagues because I'm trying to bring people together. I would say the council member with like the meanest outfits is Emily Kosky.
Okay, she rents her outfits.
Yeah, she's
Did you know that?
Yeah, I did. Rent the runway. She's a sustainable girly.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
All I know. This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
None of you have the balls to stop, stop this.
I've, I've, I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the West neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
Are you having fun on the campaign trail?
I'm having a blast. I'm having an absolute time.
So I have to restrain myself. I don't want this to reflect poorly on my guest, Aureen Choudry. I, I find your opponent this year very amusing and I don't want that to reflect on you. The fact that I find your opponent amusing because clearly you're not allowed to find your opponent amusing.
Hmm, I mean, I didn't know I had an opponent for a while. I'll just say that. And then all of a sudden I got a bunch of messages being like, are you doing okay? And I was like, I'm, I'm great. How are you?
Was it the TikTok screenshot? Hi, Aureen. Was it that one?
Yes, a few people sent that to me and I was like, oh, this is new.
Hi, Aureen.
This is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. My guest is Ward 12 City Council Member, Aureen Choudry. Thank you for being here.
Glad to be here, John.
So I've been doing a thing where I have a lightning round. And I feel like it gets the blood flowing and it gets the conversation moving so that I've noticed that Elliot Payne, for example, much better answers when I talked to him this year. Like he has gotten better over time at like giving me soundbites because he's done so many interviews. And I wonder if you've gotten better too.
Oh, let's test the theory.
Okay, lightning round. First question, what is your signature issue?
My signature issue is basically doing whatever I can to build neighborhoods and support neighborhoods that support people of all ages and incomes.
Name five important and distinct Ward 12 constituencies.
So we have our beloved senior community. And there's a set of seniors who are like solo seniors that live in single family homes. And then there are a set of seniors who live in a community setting. Um, we have a bunch of kiddos and young parents and families. So that's a constituency. Fun fact, we have a pretty great constituency of people who work at the airport. Because it is very accessible by transit to get to the airport. So I have a lot of flight attendants and pilots and airport workers. And I don't know if those five, but the other constituency I would point out is the growing renter community.
Okay, it's amazing you had two different senior communities in there in your constituencies. You're really going for the senior vote. I saw the beloved senior section on your issue page. No, nobody has pandered harder to seniors than you.
I'm just trying to adopt more grandparents, to be honest with you, because I don't have any more, I don't have any grandparents alive. So that's where it kind of comes from.
I noticed at the most recent Ward 12 convention, it was your, your first one and only one. A lot of white hair at that one and it was a lot of faith in Minnesota people.
Yeah, I had um, a town hall once with uh, faith in Minnesota folks. And I think a lot of the members there didn't realize that I wasn't the one that organized the people to come. And someone turned to me and they're like, why are there so many gray hairs here? I thought there was going to be more young people.
Senior caucus makeover. Uh, did you, did you hear about that?
I did. The seniors for all group.
Congratulations to our beloved seniors for taking back the senior caucus. So here, close your eyes, imagine yourself at a public meeting. Uh, everyone hates you there. Uh, and you're holding a microphone. What is the key to taming this unruly crowd?
Um, I have been in a lot of tense, public community meeting settings throughout my time as an organizer and my time as a council member. And I always find the best way to kind of break the ice in the room is lead with a little bit of humor and some ground rules for everyone to engage in a conversation, a very clear way to have a conversation.
So I've heard your jokes and so I'm skeptical of the humor part of that.
Hey, I've told you this before. Everyone loves to hate a dad joke because they secretly love a dad joke.
Nobody groans harder than when you tell a joke at a council meeting.
I'll just say this, there's a couple of council members and staff that will send me text messages after being like, okay, that was terrible, but that was pretty good. I even have had staff starting, starting to come and present in committee, doing their own dad jokes.
Okay, who's the funniest council member?
After me, I would have to say Jeremiah Allison. He's pretty funny.
You know who thinks they're the funniest council member?
Who?
Aisha Chugtai, Council Vice President, Aisha Chugtai. She answered that question by saying she was the funniest council member. How, how does that read to you? Is that accurate? Do you think she's even ranking in the top five?
CVP has got some jokes.
Okay.
She's got some pretty good jokes.
Who's the meanest council member?
Oh, the meanest council member? I'm gonna be charitable to my, my colleagues because I'm trying to bring people together. I would say the council member with like the meanest outfits is Emily Kosky.
Okay, she rents her outfits.
Yeah, she's
Did you know that?
Yeah, I did. Rent the runway. She's a sustainable girly.
Uh, name at least three Minneapolis police horses that Council Member Latricia Vitale named in her famous say their name speech.
Oh my gosh. I think that there was one named uh, something like Dream. I don't know. I cannot name them.
I've forgotten them too. Uh, favorite part of your job?
My favorite part of my job is engaging with community members, but bringing them into a policy process. Because I feel like that intersection is the best, is community engagement and policymaking.
Least favorite part of your job?
The least favorite part of my job is the back to back uh, schedules sometimes. Sometimes it's hard to find just the time to take a second to go check my email and respond to a bunch of things, but I don't know, I've been building up a stamina for it for the last year and a half.
A moment that will stay with you from your, your basically one year and a couple of months so far?
I think there's a lot of really significant moments that we had at the city council. I think for me, my first ordinance that I was like the lead author of, um, that felt really good to get done was the encampment removal reporting ordinance. Um, I got to work with some very brilliant uh, city council members in New York that were leading on that similar work. And just connecting with them and then engaging with our community here, especially people who are directly impacted. Um, that public hearing was one of the most phenomenal, uh, genuine public hearings that I've ever experienced. And to get that done and get a report back that showed some really much needed clarity on the state of unchallenged homelessness and the impact of encampment removals and the cost was really significant to me.
What do we talk about too much? Like, why are they talking about that? That's such a waste of time.
I don't know if it's a waste of time. I think it's a point of education. I think this whole conversation that always gets, that comes up. And then I think there's different interests and groups that seek to misinform around defunding the police. Like whenever I hear someone say that the police has been defunded or the police are being defunded, it's frustrating because the data shows there are clear votes, there are clear places where we've only seen increases to the police budget.
And what do we not talk about enough?
I don't think we talk about um, building an age friendly city. I feel like if you can build a city for people at any age, like if you can build a neighborhood, a downtown, a corridor for every single age, like you're gonna, you're gonna be set up for a lot of success because there's just so much in that intersection. I don't think we look, look at it through that lens enough.
After, so you're a year and a couple of months in, how are you, can you think of any ways you are different in that short period of time after doing this job?
I think I have just learned even more about how to move things within city hall and how much more impactful, like just conversations across the table are. Um, and how, how a lot of the barriers, and I think a lot of like the heartache that ends up, I guess bubbling up to the top or the headlines has to do with just a lack of communication and having places to engage, whether it's like city council and administration or um, interjurisdictional conversations. Um, I think that's a muscle that I've grown is just trying to work better with other levels of government and not only like lean in on like sharing the city of Minneapolis interest, but like interest of constituencies. Uh, I've gotten a lot better at talking to a, a whole diversity of a, a group of people um, at once. I think that's a skill that was really tough in the beginning because you have someone in the room that might be um, might be more like, let's say it might be more pro-transit and then someone who is fearful of transit. How do you speak to both people at the same time and send a message? And oftentimes that just comes back to like, one, taking a really clear position and then speaking to values that I think most people in our city share. And that was tough to figure out in the beginning.
That was a long lightning round. I was giving you leeway on your answers. Some of them went a little long. Lightning round was supposed to be quick.
Gotta work on it. But I think, I still think I did a pretty good job.
Yeah, you dodged the meanest council member question. I couldn't believe it when Council Vice President Aisha Chugtai answered that question. She gives a real, she gave the, the honest answer to that question in a way that you refused to. Emily Kosky in her mean outfits. What's that?
I'm trying to just bring us together at city hall. We got a lot of stuff that we need to get done for the people, so.
So what is Ward 12 concerned about? This is an easy question, but I like, I like to check in with the people who should know best, people who are campaigning in these wards. Like what, what are the issues?
Broadly speaking, Ward 12 is really, really concerned about what's happening at the federal level impacting people here on the ground. That's like number one right now. People are just very, very anxious about their livelihoods. People are really anxious about their immigrant neighbors. Uh, people are really anxious about what's going to happen in education. Um, and how that's going to impact their families. People are anxious about housing affordability. And I oftentimes hear like, what's the plan for building more housing and more affordability options? Um, public safety is always going to be a top priority. Um, it has been the top priority. Um, for, for Ward 12, pretty much since I first started running um, through my entire council term and not just like public safety in the way of like policing, but how do we grow and expand the public safety ecosystem and just what's out there to kind of prevent things?
So what is the argument people are making against you? Is it like, she's too, too left, too radical? You don't support the police. I'm just hearing this in, it seems like every ward about uh, progressive candidates. And it, as you mentioned, it doesn't ring true because we've given the police all our money. You voted for the police contract. They are the best paid police, uh, big city police in the country. So is that the case? Uh, people are making against you?
There's a, there's a, there's a handful of things I think sometimes are pretty misinformed. I mean, one thing that I did hear was just like worried about having too many young idealists on the city council. And I'm like, I'm, I'm about to turn 28 this, this weekend and I, I think that's something that might be like coded that shows up in opposition of like, maybe she's not experienced enough. Um, she's too idealistic. And my counter to that is kind of like, listen, like I'm in this because I have a lot of energy for it. I have a lot of experience in local government and we need leaders right now that are just going to be able to be bold and speak truth to power. And if that looks like radical leftism to you, well then that's what it is. Like I'm gonna speak my values and I'm gonna have that reflect what Ward 12 residents uh, want to say. One fringe kind of thing that people have been saying about me. Um, and it even popped up in the caucus. It's like very few and far between, but I feel like there's like this like campaign, like little campaign to like spread that, that they're like, well, she doesn't actually live in the ward.
Right.
And I'm like,
So what I've heard is that you're dating outside the city. Dating someone who doesn't live here. How could you do that?
People are so interested in where I'm sleeping at night. And I'm like, this is weird. I, and it's only a few people, but it's like, they talk a lot about it. And I'm like, yeah. I don't know. I'm like, love is love. People have long distance relationships or like 26 minutes apart. But I'm here in the neighborhood. I'm like, the community meetings I'm doing in Ward 12, the numbers that we've racked up, like I'm hauling butt around this ward and I would never, I, I'll just say this, I would never be able to ever live in a suburb again. I'm never gonna do it.
The reason it comes up is because uh, your opponent, Becca Thompson, has said she will move here when it's legally required of her to move here. So it's a little bit of a defensive thing. And she represents on the park board, an entirely different part of the city. So it's a little defensive there. You know, you know how I know Minneapolis is on the upswing?
How?
Well, I hear, I go to meetings in Uptown and people just nonstop complaining about parking and buses and bikes. And I'm like, we're getting back to normal. It's not the usual uh, crime politics and fear politics. It's more uh, transportation anger. Is there transportation anger in Ward 12 or is that just a sleepy part of the city where everyone gets along?
I mean, I think in Ward 12, the way that people disagree is more tame in general. Which I, I appreciate about our community. I think people are like very, very thoughtful and want to engage and want to understand. But I think there is like definitely like underpinnings of people were worrying about not enough parking. I think transit safety is like been a conversation, but we have some pretty walkable, accessible parts of our neighborhood to transit. And so people see the value in that. I think there was a lot of frustration around the beeline construction that happened on Lake Street that I hear a lot about. And um, frankly, I do think there was like a poor uh, poor effort around communication and just making sure that everyone was prepared for that, that I think could have been mitigated. But that was when, while it was running when that happened the first time.
I think we're all concerned about transit safety though. What do you, what do you, what do you tell people on that when they're like, is it about the light rail?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and just like transit corridors.
So you're obviously not uh, in charge of our transit system. So it's a little more difficult for you to like address that concern. What, what do you do to address that concern as a council member?
Well, one of the first things that I did as a council member on this issue, when I was sworn in two weeks after my election, I jumped into the budget process. And the thing that I saw when I was um, writing transit at the 46th street station here in Ward 12, and then when I was working for Council Member Chavez, was safety not just on the platform, on the car, but like in and around the corridor, right? And like, that's a place where on transit, Metro Transit is, has lifted up a bunch of work there. And then Hennepin County helps facilitate some of the social services that go out to people, but the city was kind of missing out of the conversation. And so I passed a budget amendment for transit safety coordination. And I'm currently working with our neighborhood safety department um, in developing um, some programming around what does it look like to make the corridor more welcoming, like those transit hubs that we have in the city of Minneapolis, where we're seeing livability issues or we're seeing crime happen, like maybe we need more visible figures there that are there to help do wayfinding and connect with people and be a resource, not just on the platform. Um, because I think issues happen off of Metro Transit like property and then it's onto city jurisdiction. And when you get into like jurisdictional finger pointing, I've seen that's where people get left out and things just don't happen. And so that's a program that um, is currently being developed to be implemented. And so I'm looking forward to that.
So the thing that you put in, was it your first budget?
Mm-hmm.
And that hasn't been implemented yet? Are you frustrated by that?
I mean, I think I was for a time, but one of the things that I've learned as a city council member is follow-up and constantly being an advocate for the things that you've worked on to get done. Like follow-up is really, really key. So I've been really happy to find out ways to work with our staff to implement something. So I mean, it's better late than never, in my opinion. And I actually think now that Metro Transit uh, has the trip agents and has had security and people generally that I talk to that ride transit feel safer on their rides. I feel like this is a really good moment to kind of tackle the, around transit hub issues. I think people in other levels of government have kind of found their lane. And so the city can kind of step in and support corridor level um, crime prevention or wayfinding, things like that.
So what is a thing that doesn't get reported that people should know that would help them understand how local government and city hall works or doesn't work? Like, what do you just desperately want people to understand? Wish they understood better?
One of the things that I think sometimes we try to proselytize on the dais and hope that people hear is there's a really, really big struggle right now between like the legislative branch and the executive branch, like the administration and staff and finding ways to work together and communicate. Like when it comes to big issues, whether it's like a big project, like let's say the, the Democracy Center at 3000 Mini-Haha or a big issue, I don't know, like the food vendors ordinance that we worked on, like you need more spaces where city staff and council members can sit down with each other one-on-one and work things out and like have a timeline to figure out policy pathways and talk to each other and do constituent engagement. And that does not happen regularly. And I think that's a barrier. And also the legislative department, I think why the state legislature can be really effective. Um, when they have like the, the votes that they need is they have robust support for research. They have robust support for budget analysis, um, legal support, those types of things and communication staff, like communication is so key, I think, for a legislative branch to talk to constituents, to make the public aware, but also let them know what you're doing for them. And we are in a moment in government restructure where the legislative department just does not have the support it needs to execute. Execute work in, in a way that's meaningful, meaningfully received, but also can be like supported. There's a lot of like support for the executive administrative side, unless so on the legislative side.
There's been a lot of stories about mismanagement of the city's violence interrupters, violence intervention contracts. What is the underlying problem and how do you fix that?
I mean, for me, I think the underlying problem is a lack of transparency from the Office of Community Safety on some of the things that have been going wrong for a while, right? Like contracts not getting out. And then also a lack of management from the mayor's office, right? Like he did, there, that office, that role directs the Office of Community Safety and makes improvements. And I feel like in my experience, like I haven't seen a lot of leadership from that office to address those concerns. And then as council members, we have oversight tools. Um, and that's why we had such a long and hard fought like conversation when it came to those violence um, interrupters or GBI, GBI and YGBI contracts. We were like trying to get the information to ensure that like the contracts that we're gonna have, have were actually going to go out and then they were going to be successful. And it kind of turned into this like press conference that um, press conference battle to, in a way. But I think on the council side, my view is we were trying to get the information out as to why we're like, okay, it doesn't seem like the Office of Community Safety at this point is going to be able to make this program successful. We want it to be successful, successful for this time. So let's move it to Hennepin County because they are already doing this work and they can take this on. And then we're gonna get service delivery out while we figure out what's happening here. And also there was like a, a shortage of staff for some time there too.
And if you move it to Hennepin County, they can't double bill you because
Yeah.
it's all under the same entity. I was watching this guy, one of the, I think he was doing violence intervention work. And he, the reporter asked him, so you're doing 180 hours of work a week? And he's like, technically, yeah. And then I did the math on my phone because I don't know how many hours are in a week. Seven times 24 and it's uh, it's less hours than he said he was working in the, in the entire week.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll just say, I think one solution that we should absolutely explore is like, I don't think we have um, we, we have like seen the full potential of what this auditing department, independent auditing can be. Like I think that should be a place where program evaluation and information comes to the council to support our, our work and oversight.
Uh, the police have been funded. Uh, hiring is on just an upward swing. I'm talking to Katie Cashman soon. And so I've been thinking about this a lot as it relates to both of you. Because both of you voted for the police union contract. You voted for the historic raises. And some people will hate you for that. And I don't think the people who like want those things will appreciate you for it. They will blame you uh, for defunding the police. That never happened. They will not give you credit for the historic raises and the staffing increase. Like you could easily make, you could go hard conservative on me right now and say, I've been here since 2024, my first year in office, and look at that staffing chart, way up. Like, I don't know that I would uh, we should be giving you all the credit for that, but you could easily say it. Like I got here and things got better. The thing you wanted to have happen has happened. And uh, so do you make that argument? Do you say, hey, look at that staffing chart, check that scoreboard?
Uh, no, not like that. No, definitely not. I, I feel like talking about, talking about staffing or the public safety ecosystem in that way is disingenuous. It, it just is. It's like, are people seeing the results?
I'm worried that it's politically effective and that like you're unilaterally disarming if you can't talk about it that way. And like, I realize
I do share with, I do share with, I mean, I do share with constituents when they're like, well, if their like top issue is police staffing, like, or if they bring it up to me, I'm like, because you reached out and other people in the ward have said that this is a priority for them. And because this was something I committed to, which is like getting us to the minimum staffing number, I voted for this contract. And I want you to know, this contract, the way that it was set up, there were really important reforms within it, but there wasn't enough. And I wasn't, I didn't get the opportunity to be a part of those contract negotiations. However, like we should question why we didn't push for more if the, the price tag was going to be so high. And we also have to understand most of our community was not happy with, like, or meant, much of our community was not happy with the reforms that got into this contract because they were so far between. Like the city of Minneapolis is having a continuous discourse about police funding and police reform and lack thereof. Um, so I kind of use it as an opportunity to help people kind of open their minds to just throwing money into the police department is not going to solve our safety issues. And it's also not going to solve the reform issues that we have before us. It's going to take a lot more. And I hear you on staffing and I hear you on getting on the mandatory minimum. And I heard from a lot of Ward 12 residents, a lot of people who didn't support me, a lot of people who did support me. And it felt pretty, by the time it was time to vote for it, it felt pretty clear, like that was the choice that I was gonna make. Um, the other, the other choice to vote it down, should there have been enough vote, uh, votes to vote it down would have led to a path of it going to arbitration where I don't think we would have won anything new. So I was going to kind of respect, respect the will of the people that had reached out and kind of the commitments that I made when I ran for office because that felt really important.
It feels like so much of the public safety and police conversation is like vibes and style. Like I want a council member who will just uh, bring sandwiches to, to the uh, police union every morning. And uh, like, and it's not based on like, well, did, did they vote for the police contract? Did they give them the raises you said you wanted? Is staffing up like you said you wanted? And like, they're not looking at results. There's so many challengers running against incumbents on the premise that I'm gonna fully staff the police department. Like in Ward seven and Ward 12. And like, well, they're doing the thing you say needs to happen. I'm just very frustrated. You don't have to answer, answer that.
I mean, I think that's just, I'm just gonna make a note of that. I mean, like, yeah, like there is, there is that undercurrent that happens all the time in this conversation about policing. And it's like, I, I don't think it's strategic. I don't think it's going to get us what we ultimately need. And I think it's misinformed. And that's why I, I like having community office hours. I like opportunities to come on and speak with you and answer these questions. I like having community office hours. I like opportunities to come on and speak with you and answer these questions because the best way to kind of combat misinformation or that type of messaging is to just speak to the actuals of what's happening.
Uh, so rent control is that, so what is your position on rent stabilization, rent control? Like what do you think should, should happen?
My position is that I am definitely open to discussing the policy and taking it on. I, I think among my colleagues that are in support of it, I think I'm more skeptical of rent stabilization. I just think it's like a, it's a larger and harder policy conversation that we're in and I think there is validity to worry about like how it would impact our housing ecosystem. While on the other hand, like there is price gouging happening in our cities, the price of rent is going up. There's questions about, you know, like artificial like price fixing, whether it's um, just keeping units vacant, that whole thing. So I see, I see the problem that is trying to solve and should there be a rent stabilization policy before me, like I will be really, really intentional. I will take a lot of time to figure out like what's the best approach and I'll listen to constituents. And so if anyone's listening that's super supportive of rent stabilization, I encourage them to talk to me. If they're not supportive of it, I would love to talk to them as well. Um, but I don't think I would be, uh, I don't think I would be a vote that's like an easy yes or an easy no. It would really just depend on the work that we put into the policy. And also the, sorry, I was just gonna say the economic conditions have changed significantly since we started the conversation.
I'm a little concerned about what's uh, happened in St. Paul and it's, it's now getting rolled back. I'm worried that we will repeat the mistakes of St. Paul. They, they implemented, and I think it's accurate to say was the strongest in the country. And I know the pushback on the idea that it uh, that it stopped development like, oh. You know, it's the economy, it's not all the rent stabilization, but I do think it had an impact. So I'm worried that we will follow that road. Do, do you see, like, would you want a new construction exemption, for example? Are there like pieces of a policy that you would definitely have to see before you'd even consider voting yes?
Yeah, I support a new construction exemption. I think that's like a starting point for me.
Okay, so I saw this phrase on your website, just cause notice of ending tenancy. Are we no longer saying just cause eviction?
We can still say just cause notice of eviction. I think that's what
Is that, so is just cause notice of ending tenancy different from just cause eviction? Is that a different policy we're referencing?
I think it, I think what the intention on the website was trying to cover uh, both, right? Like, there's a really, really big issue with people like being evicted without actually getting a real reason and having that level of accountability. But I also think sometimes people get put into situations throughout our city where there, the lease is over, they're, they're being told they're not going to be able to be a tenant again. Um, and they were planning on continuing their lease and they want to pass it off to the next uh, next person. So I think that's something that I'm interested in exploring, but I think we gotta start with just cause notice of eviction.
So I'm gonna share something with you and maybe you can share something with me after. Do you know what blew my mind recently?
What?
There are five plausible candidates in the city, three current council members and two like candidates who could win, who answered no to the question that do they think the city needs any additional renter protections? That blew my mind. Cause I'm thinking you could answer that question and have it be like a meaningless symbolic thing that doesn't actually do anything. Like, why would you give a flat no to the question of does the city need additional renter protections? Does that blow your mind?
Maybe if I hadn't been in City Hall for the time that I've been in, it would maybe blow my mind, but like the interests of the landlord and developer lobby are very, very strong and maybe some people like are very out of touch with the realities of renters in our city and just like working people. Like I could totally see, I could totally see some people taking that position.
I mean, I've been around a while. I've seen some things and like just give, give a meaningless yes.
I mean, counterpoint to say no is also pandering to a certain group.
Right, right. I was just like kind of blow, like landlords don't really vote because a lot of them don't live here.
No, they don't live here and there are so many with different violations, like the violations in our city for a lot of these big, big lander landlords that own a lot of properties are, are just insane to see. So I mean, it's, I, for me, maybe the thing, like if I really thought about it, that blows my mind just on principle is just like we're a majority renter city and like, that's not going to change. We're actually probably going to see more people renting. Um, as we see more units available. And like, I think there is a good effort to create homeownership opportunities, but a lot of the people that are getting the home owner, ownership opportunities in our city. For the ones that we're promoting, they were lower income to begin with and they were renters. And I'd hope like people that were formerly renters and had hard experiences in our city would be empathetic enough to support poor renters protections.
Like if I flipped the question and said, do you think we need policies that like support and protect homeowners? Like would they say no? There's no way they would say no. Like it's a big group of people and you pan, at, at the very least, even if you're not sincere, you pander to them. In what world do we not feel the need to pander to sizable groups like homeowners and renters? Blows my mind. Uh, so the next comprehensive plan is coming up. We're gonna be, you will be debating it. Uh, if you win, uh, with your colleagues, what do we need to see in that? Do we need further zoning reforms that make uh, like triplexes a viable option? They were legalized in the twenty forty plan, but they're not quite uh, to viability in a lot of cases. And you know, what kinds of things do we need to see?
Man, I will be honest with you, uh, thinking about the next comprehensive plan hasn't been something that I've super put my head down on. I've been really focused on saving the current comprehensive.
The, the legal battle went on too long for you?
I mean, that's what like the primary focus was last year for me at the state legislature. Uh, was just trying to convince some of our
Salute your service.
Trying to convince them like, hey, like this is, we need this comprehensive plan for for, even with its imperfections to continue to have a way to address the housing crisis. I mean, just based off of like some things that I've seen that we've struggled with is like maybe thinking about um, and maybe this is, maybe this is getting more into zoning code and text, but I'm sure that's also a part of it. Is thinking about ways like, it makes it like different requirements for how a triplex or um, multiplex that uh, is gonna be built on a certain lot, like if there's certain restrictions that make it hard for it to be built, like certain setbacks, certain design. Um, design requirements, that's there. I think we can also kind of take a look at like where our major transit hubs are. Um, and see if there's other parts and parcels that could be upzoned. Um, I think we have to put climate resiliency into a harder focus. Um, in thinking about our comprehensive plan and also again, it's like, how do we put into frame an age-friendly city? Uh, for everyone, right? We recently had a conversation in the Planning Commission that's actually going to come to our Business Housing and Zoning Committee and maybe the episode will have aired after that discussion. But it's about upzoning, um, a part of uh, Lake Street to, to build a, a larger rental unit. And I think that'll be, um, that is like an example of things that we can further discuss for opportunities to make it easier to build housing options and focusing on affordability too.
Uh, do you wanna talk about race and gender?
Sure, yeah, always. I can always talk about that.
So I wanted to, I was thinking about this question to ask Aisha Chugti recently, but I don't wanna put anyone in the position of having to respond in a way that makes them sound like they're complaining about the way they've been treated, you know, that's kind of putting them in a bad position. So I will ask you to, I will ask you to respond about things I've seen people, uh, the way they've treated her. And then you don't have to respond about the way they treat you because everyone knows you're interchangeable. No one can tell you, you both apart. Uh, so I see people at public meetings like get uh, angry and dismissive in ways that I don't think they would treat me that way. I don't think, I don't, I don't see them treat white, uh, male politicians that way. And uh, I noticed it with Lisa Bender, who's a white woman, but like there's a gender aspect to it too. Is this just something you have lived with or do you notice a difference now that you're an elected official? Like is there a note, you noticing this in your job?
Um, first I'll just start off by saying us dressing up as each other for Halloween. Uh, kinda helped with it, the situation about people mixing us up. Cause we were just making fun of everyone that was like mixing us up. Uh, it was really fun and on the nose. Um, I mean, I'm a, I'm a brown Muslim woman who is a young person. And even as I get to be a council member and I have more, um, I guess like access and voice. Uh, my, the experiences that I've had and the experiences that I've seen in other women of color, specifically in young women of color. Yeah, like I, it's just, let me try to collect my thoughts. Let me try to collect my thoughts on this one, cause it's an important one. Here's the real on it, right? As an, as an elected official, there is an expectation that, uh, you, you have to kind of just like take the things that come at you that are uncharitable, unfair, racist, misogynistic. Because you are representing a larger public. Um, and then there's also the aspect of being an elected official who has a responsibility um, to model the way uh, the way that other people, black and brown people, young people should advocate for themselves and be treated. So I, I'll say like the, the messages that I have gotten. Not from like the majority of people. I think majority of people in my community are very supportive, but like the messages I, I have gotten, I've gotten pretty like intense Islamophobic messages. I've gotten pretty dismissive messages about my intelligence. I have definitely had to advocate for myself harder in spaces. And then with other colleagues that I have. Um, and I, I'm sure CVP uh, would speak to this as well. It's like, when we're in a room together, like I'm advocating to amplify her voice and I know she's doing the same. And there's like a solidarity and power in that, but it's absolutely, even as a elected, I think there, it shows up in a different way. Um, and I, whenever I'm asked this question, I, I was asked this question actually in, at Roosevelt High School. Um, at, at their youth, youth action day. I took it as an opportunity to say like, if, if you, if you're a person that is not of an identity that is marginalized or not in the majority, like racism, misogyny, Islamophobia, classism, all these things do continuously happen and you might not be experiencing it. But you have an opportunity to use your voice to create more welcoming spaces. Or if you see that happening, that's your cue to step in and say something. And then if you're experiencing this, know that you, you have support in so many different places from people who um, are in your community or look like you or have your experiences and it's hard and you're a human. Um, I think thinking about maybe outside of myself and it through my own experiences, like sometimes the expectations are really, really high. It's like, I have to be perfect. I have to answer every single question perfectly and I have to be super, super prepared. And that's kind of how I walk into a room. Like it just is, like I have to make sure that I have everything ready. And then you see leaders, we can point to leaders in the federal level, we can point to leaders at state level. Uh, specifically like, I don't know, like you can look at Elon Musk, we'll just say that, like unprepared. Just saying things that are baseless and not in fact, and like that's, that's what's applauded and that's who's given power. So that's kind of been the experience. Um, I've definitely gotten a, a thicker skin in a way that I kind, in a way that I just couldn't have anticipated. Um, being a council member and I think I've gotten more empathetic. And I mean, if someone is saying something or doing something that is just absolutely wrong, I'm not going to just let it happen to me because that's, that's saying that this, that behavior is allowed to happen to another person. Who could be elected or not elected and that's just not right, especially if it's in the lines of racism, misogyny, dismissal, disempowering someone.
I, you talk about getting a thicker skin and I feel, I feel bad because uh, being exposed uh, as an elected official like this can make people, I think it can turn people mean. There's a potential like you get such a thick skin that you're numb to it and you get a little mean because people have come at you. And I'm not saying you're, you're mean, uh, you conduct yourself with uh, grace, I think. But like, uh, do, do you see that happen to people? People just get mean when you're around politics for, for so long.
Yeah, I think it can happen to people. I think you can really you can, you can really uh, choose to absorb that stuff or just like not knowingly absorb it and take it in. Like I have definitely bad days for sure. Um, when I was a, a young organizer, one of the first people that actually talked about this uh, to me and like another, a, a group of like, um, young women was actually Erin Makeaway. And this is when she was a first time state rep. And the advice that she gave and it just like, I guess stuck with me is like you, someone can say something about you and give something to you and it's here. And you can, you can choose to like throw it away or you can take it, like you can take it in you. And that's an active choice that you get to make, like you have agency in that. And it's really, it's a hard skill to develop, but it's stuck with me and that's kind of the tact that I've been taking. And also trying to be able to support people that I think are experiencing that. Um, that's been really helpful.
I hold a grudge. I, I will carry things with me forever.
Hey, I think it's important to have a long memory. You gotta be able to have a history.
Uh, some of my favorite moments at City Hall are when you're muttering under your breath when Michael Rainville says something outrageous. Uh, make sure you turn your mic off or maybe you're too close to his mic and it just picks it up. I don't know.
My mic?
You're like, oh, you're like, oh my god. I, I forget what the things you have said, but it's like, you just, you gasp when he says something. You're like, oh, oh no.
I think I have pretty good microphone discipline, so I might be just getting caught on his mic. But I'm like
We've got, we've got you on decorum watch.
Yeah, cause I've been calling for decorum or because I've been called.
Because somebody violate, Michael Rainville violates decorum and you just audibly react in a horrified way.
I mean, listen, I do think in our chambers, we need to do a better job of just having the policy debate, just having the policy debate and disagreeing and being really, really good at like defending your position and trying to win the argument. I think oftentimes colleagues of mine, and you know which ones they are, like we all watch, everyone that's watching this is probably watching the council meetings. They do go into personal attacks and listen, like at the end of the day, my feelings aren't gonna get hurt if people are saying whatever about me. Um, but it makes people in the public feel like what is going on with government? Are people even caring about me and are people even listening to me? And like, that's what I don't like because I don't want people to get disillusioned with the process and local government. Like we're in a moment where we need to try to build trust with people. Um, and that takes away trust. And so I'm, I mean, if someone says something that is like off kilter or I think not representative of the policy work that we're trying to do, like I'm either gonna call decorum myself, which I have before I'll say something into the mic or I'm gonna react. I mean, I'm a human.
Uh, do you have any thoughts on the mayor's race? Are you gonna ma, you gonna make an endorsement? Have you endorsed? I don't think you have. Uh, do you have any thoughts on the mayor's race? Are you gonna ma, you gonna make an endorsement? Have you endorsed? I don't think you have.
I haven't endorsed a particular candidate and I don't know if I'm gonna endorse, I could, I haven't closed that door. Um, I support getting a new mayor.
Okay, do you have any recommendations? What's good? Do you have new hobbies? What, what should other people be doing that you like?
I think people should sleep more. That's not what I'm doing enough of. So, sleep more, drink more water, um, go touch grass. People should go out and touch grass and get off their phones and stop doom scrolling. Um, I think these are, it sounds really basic, but I don't see enough people doing that. And I don't see enough people like prioritize just like not working and stepping away for a second and taking care of themselves and checking in. So that's gonna be my thing is like, get off your phone, go touch some grass, be outside. Um, some things that I have been enjoying lately is, um. I've been enjoying getting uh, smoothie bowls and fresh pressed juices at the dri- dripping root. I'm gonna promo them just really quick. I think people.
Smoothie bowls?
Smoothie bowls. They're so.
Cups aren't good enough for our smoothies anymore?
A smoothie bowl is so different than a smoothie. A smoothie bowl is like thicker and then you can like have peanut butter and chia seed pudding and bananas. And berries and extra protein and all these toppings. And you just mix it together and you have it like a meal and it's just so good for you and it's delicious and it's healthier than ice cream. Um, so that's kind of been what I've been doing pretty much every single Friday. Because the dripping root is like open Thursday through Saturday and so on Fridays, I don't. I, I like to be in Ward twelve instead of City Hall and that'll be a part of my regular, my regular ritual. And my other thing that I encourage people to do, and this is not in my ward, it's just outside of my ward and Jason Chavez's ward. But I like, I want to claim it a little bit, is watching um, watching movies and film at the Trilon. Yeah, I saw Blade in film and that was amazing.
So you mentioned getting outside and this is a thing that I just, I saw in MinPost about drive-throughs in St. Paul and how St. Paul is slow walking their drive-through ban. And I'm thinking here in Minneapolis, I don't regret for a moment that we banned drive-throughs. And of course, it's me saying that, you know where I come from, but like, uh, how about you? Cause like people, waiting in their car is in a long drive-through line that like spills out into the street. Seems like the worst thing ever. Just get out of your car, walk up to the Dairy Queen, there's plenty of seats, be outside for a few moments, right? So drive-through ban, uh, you gonna, you gonna move to overturn it? Are you happy with it? We're keeping it?
We're, it's, it is great. I think, I think driving is. I think driving is bad for people's like emotional regulation skills. Like, I think it just makes you an angrier, more upset person. I don't like the person I'm in, uh, the person I am when I'm on Hiawatha Avenue in traffic.
Right, it's stressful.
I don't want to be that person. I want to be the person who's like outside, walking their dog. Or just zooming past traffic on their bike and just touching grass. Being inside of your car in, in Minneapolis, traffic is not good for your health or emotions.
That's a good, that's a good way to end it and I hope everyone listened to this whole episode in Ward twelve. Because the Ward twelve convention is coming up when?
May third at Sanford Middle School.
This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. Uh, my guest has been Oring Chowdhury, Ward twelve council member. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'm your host, John Edwards. Uh, thank you for listening.